All the order of the Maryland County Board of Commissioners, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. Please stand for the invitation. Our representative, James Clemmons, place the flag.
Yeah, let us pray. Eternal God, you graciously allowed us to be able to come into your presence today. And we're thankful today, God, that you spared us once again to come to take care of the business of your people. As we gather today, God, we ask you to cleanse our hearts, our minds, Lord, that we may be on one accord. Now, God, tonight, Lord, as we come on the eve of what we celebrate as Veterans Day, God, we give thanks to all those, Lord, who have sacrificed, who've raised their hand in support of the perils of the Constitution and the borders of this nation. God, we pray tonight for this Board of Commissioners that you would touch each one of their hearts, their minds, and when they get to a point where they can't make a decision, God, make it for them. We pray for our state government and our governor, Lord, and we pray for those lawmakers, Lord, in Washington, D.C., that they may be able to come on one accord and be able to look, Lord, at the forty-two million people, Father, who affected now. Father, we pray now, Lord, that you be our guide and force, Lord, that we look to you in all that we do. But we ask these in our blessings. In thy son Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is about the members to the agenda that need to be made.
Mr. Chairman, we need to add under whole business number five, discussion on two acre lots. Number five in our whole business discussion on two acre lots.
All right, any other changes?
No, sir.
Of course, and we set some of second, all in favor. Do you have any presentations?
Not standing.
Finance report.
Commissioners, Commissioners, these are the bank balances as of this afternoon. Also shown is the interest received this month and for the prior fiscal year from investment accounts. On the bottom of the page, you'll see the loss, loss and T's loss amounts that were received at the end of October. On the second page, this loss balance is one point five million and the T's loss balance is just over six hundred and eleven thousand.
And these are up to date with all the permissions we made in the last couple of meetings?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board about the finance report? Thank you very much. You have to talk with his here to speak.
No, sir.
Let's continue to have citizen comment. So before you come up, I'll read this. Speakers must contact the county clerk at a.stevens at marylandcountyga.gov or call seven zero six six seven two three four six zero only before the dates and times listed below in order to be placed on the agenda to speak. Speakers must provide their name, address, and topic they wish to discuss. The first Monday of the month, six P.M. meeting, speakers must email or call before five P.M. On the day of the scheduled meeting, on the fourth Tuesday of the month, six P.M. meeting, speakers must email or call before five P.M. on the day of the scheduled meeting. Speakers must direct their remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern and personal attacks have not been tolerated. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of the board of commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comment. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. So first I have Mr. David Lau. You'll please come up and state your name, address, and topic.
I'm little
Just tell us your name, your address.
David Lau. The Command by Jerail Road.
We'll have three minutes for you to speak.
Sure.
Okay. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Jennifer. She has helped us. Thank you. All right, we have a problem with P A B holdings and it's on Jerail Road. We have too much dust and we have it noise at night. We have beat, beat, beat from ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock, three o'clock, five o'clock. They have no rest area harm whatsoever. Is there quite a time? The road on Jerail Road is about a foot high where they turn out and screws, but bolts and nuts and gets our tires. I had six flats. My neighbor had four and another one that had had two. Uh, there's no help. We've, this has been going on for six and a half years and we cannot get anybody hardly. We've been in the county. I have my notebook here. It's full of county people that we've talked to and worked with and we get no answers from nobody. Uh, this truck's are starting to park overnight. And and I'm working with three families also on the complaints. When we've called EPA, they trust us. They do not leave nothing unless they see it. And we have reported it, have reported things and it'll go on for weeks and months before we can get an answer. And it is the hardest place I've ever seen to work for here with their work with that thing that's going wrong up there at the plant. They say they did not have a license to work with and this was before they had went back down uh, last month and you know, the government is down right now and you cannot get an answer anywhere. And one thing we would like on twenty-seven highway and one hundred, if the state had put no through traffic, it would help us out a bunch. The trucks go through and I mean, Ms. Jennifer has had some, but they still they still go through quite frequently. The sheriff said that he doesn't have the deputies to control it on the people going through. We have boxes. My wife and I walk each day or every two, three days and we picked up nuts, bolts, and screws and I have a package out there, a plastic box. You're welcome to look at and see what is in the road up there. It is a problem, this truck land. I need it cleaning up. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have this call allow.
I said it all.
Okay, sir. Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have Mr. Jimmy Prophet.
I've never done this, so I'm a little nervous.
That's all right. Just state your name and address.
Jimmy Prophet, nineteen seven forty-eight Roosevelt Highway, Spring, number two. I just got involved in this because of the dust. I have pictures that when the eighteen wheelers come out to load up and then come across where the scale is, once they're coming out and come across where the scales are, I have pictures of just nothing but clouds. You can't even hardly see after the eighteen wheelers come and that stays in the air and one of their, one of their uh, machine things that has conveyor, I got pictures of it. It just constantly blowing dust. Now, I live about maybe a quarter of a mile on Roosevelt Highway. I'm the second house on the left and all the time the dust is getting that far, is carrying that far because the wind blows all the way that way all the time. That's where all most of my wind comes from, from that direction. Also, uh, at night, I used to work third shift up until about, uh, I'd say a year ago, less, a little bit less, so I didn't know everything that was going on, but my wife complained about the noise. So since I've been laid off, the noise is all night long, banging, clanging, beeping, everything and you cannot sleep. Uh, you can hear steel beams falling, uh, and it makes a terrible loud noise. I don't know if they have a, a noise ordinance or not for the county, but I will check into that. The roadway where the trucks come out and make that U-turn to come to Roosevelt Highway the dust has built up all along both sides of the road. And two weeks ago, when it was a heavy rain coming through, I was coming from, uh, the range on, on Jerail Road and the water coming out of that place was so much in the road, it made me slip. I might have a little slit times. It was not one hundred percent perfect, but there's a lot of water on the road that made it slick right there. If something could be done about the dirt, it's building up like that. A hundred and another thing, a hundred foot is supposed to be the east end from the center of the road from sixty to a hundred foot in State of Georgia. And now here lately, uh, they have been piling steel, long steel beams jutting up the hill. I mean, that's something I've loaded there and it's jutting up toward the hill. So if anybody runs off the side of the road because it does go pretty quick. If anybody goes off the side and leaves a bush control, there's gonna be a real bad accident there. There are all the steel from, from right there where the first entry, where, where the waste station is from there all the way up toward way down where the, where the property ends, they pile up steel up on the right way.
Okay, thank you, sir. If that was all of the three minutes, do you need any more to go over?
No, sir. I think that pretty well covers everything. Do I leave the pictures of the dust?
You can if you don't mind. Yes, sir.
All right.
Do you need to say?
No. I do.
Thank you very much. We're gonna make copies of those. Okay, thank you all. Uh, next item is the minutes from the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting at six P.M. We have a chance to review those and the change that needs to be made. Motion to accept the minutes is presented.
I should accept them.
Have a motion need to second.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor. Next is minutes from the November fifth, twenty twenty-five special call meeting at five thirty P.M. Any changes need to be made to that? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
So I'm saying, thank you.
Motion to second, all in favor. Stop saying I wouldn't. We just staying here and rest. Okay, no public hearings, no appointments.
I understand.
Well, I'm getting into business. I have ones discussion and direction on allocation of general funds. Section B of the original compensation allocation of general projects fund table from August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
Commissioners, due to the recent passage of the twenty twenty-six plus and this, um, request for a work session will be later on in the courthouse renovations. I requested this item be tabled one more time until November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M. This will allow sufficient time for me and Finance Director Ms. Lackey to go through splosh allocations and look at this and see if we need to use any of these revenue sources.
Do you want to make a favor to the meeting at the end of November?
Correct.
All right. All right. Well, the people who have spoken to citizen comment, just to make sure you guys understand, we're not going to discuss or make any kind of rules on those comments tonight. So I just want to make sure you guys knew that in case you were waiting on that and didn't have to. But you're welcome to state it as well to make sure. Uh, item two is consideration of the proposal from Dean's commercial two-way rate for radio equipment and site services at Greenville P S C, quote, ten forty-eight. This is tabled from September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
Commissioners, I spoke with Dean and we are requesting to table this until December eighth, twenty twenty-five at a regular meeting to allow time for Dean to get with P S C about all of the dimensions and that for the tower behind. Thanks, go.
So much. All in favor? All right, right. Three, discussion on case number P C two five dash zero one three. Request from Taco LLC to hear requests for special use of parcel one zero seven dash zero three zero dash zero zero one, otherwise three five two two Hornet Church Road. From L D R to L D R special use for proposed use of a communication tower. This was tabled October twenty eighth, twenty seventy-five.
Commissioners, this was tabled and now is required for action on the board to either approve the rezoning to L D R special use or deny the request.
Well, this is in my district, first one to speak a little bit, yes. From the investigation and the data presented during that meeting and the investigation I've done since that to get to conclusion, uh, I recommend we approve the request to rezone. But then in form of the motions.
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor. All opposed. Motion passes. All right, next item four is discussion on paving two thousand foot section of Ellis Road, chisel mill, John Knight and Brandon Larry. This was tabled from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
Commissioner, staff is researching that you have the ordinance behind this paper. There is no requirement of the ordinance to be paved entirely. It can be paved in two thousand foot sections. Um, staff just recommends put in a stipulation that it must be paid at a developer's cost. It must meet county standards to be brought back to the board to be accepted into the county road system. Staff also recommends a road bond put in place per the county ordinances as approved.
Any discussion with the board or the motion?
In this, can we also put in there that it has to be, if they're paving it for this purpose, it has to start at existing pavement? So it stops people from coming in and buying land further down a dirt road and only trying to pave just in front of their property. It has to, the pavement has to pick up an existing pavement. So at the start of where this road, right?
Yeah, if somebody wants to start again, they have to start at the, at the end of the two thousand feet. I agree with that.
Continue on to their property. So it's not somebody buying midway down a dirt road and just paving two thousand feet midway in a dirt road.
Right.
So Cassandra, can we ask you a couple of questions? So the, I guess I realize the intent of this developer is to pave this section so they can two acre lots versus five, they can maximize their property.
Right.
In our ordinance, does this has to be curb and gutter for this or is it not?
No, not, not curb and gutter is for a subdivision, not for, not for the access road. But inside their subdivision, it would have to be
But our subdivision ordinance states that it's what, three houses? So if they build three, then it is a subdivision, right? Four.
Subdivision is four to four or more.
Okay, used to be three.
It's four or more. You get the mother, mother lot and a free one.
So are they planning on building more than four houses on that area? How many acres are they?
How many acres in total?
Yeah, are they gonna do? Cause if it, if they have more than eight acres and build more than four houses, then they automatically become a subdivision.
Well, a subdivision, isn't it four acres off of one road?
Off of one road.
I wanted to heard explain to us what that is. That'll start getting something.
But I mean, you know, if you're going down the road, you make a driveway off of that road and you put more than four houses in there, that's considered a subdivision.
That, that's just, yeah, on a, on a
So if they go two acres and two acres and two acres and two acres, they can go on and on, but that's not a subdivision, correct?
Yes, that would fall into subdivision regulations. Yes.
The night they were here, I think they said they had thirty-six acres on one side. So if they go in and develop more than four, they'll have to curb and gutter that subdivision.
If they were to cut a new road into a subdivision.
That's what they said they're wanting to do.
If, if they want to cut a road into it and make it into
There's not enough road frontage there for them to get two acre, two acre, two acre, two acre. They're wanting to go down to the land they own on both sides and then develop two acre lots of what I understood on that night. They have land on both sides, so they wanted to pay.
Sides of Ellis Road, they don't. They're only developing on one side of Ellis Road.
They said they own land on both sides. We're just looking at the one side at this time.
I'm not familiar with the upper side.
But it does sound
You've shown me it's just on the bottom side.
But yes, if it's three lots and then just as soon as you go to number four, you fall under subdivision guidelines.
Right.
Period.
So do they have a plan for that acreage? I'm not trying to throw you on the spot, but
They do. I did not realize that there was gonna be, this was gonna be brought up or I would have my file with me. Um, it was should have
Cause they have thirty something acres and they want to go two acre lots and they have fifteen, eighteen house sites that they can build. It's a subdivision.
You have a few problems, John. I know that's coming off of both two roads. I know it's coming off Ellis Road and Forest Road, right? I know that guy houses coming off both roads. But not all of them are coming off Ellis. Only ones come off Ellis. I think there are four to five lots coming off Ellis.
I think we need to understand that a little more. Um, because if what they're doing constitutes a subdivision, then the paved section they want to pave has to be curb and gutter.
Not on county road, only when they go into
Only they go into a subdivision and create a whole new road. A new road has to be curb and gutter. They're wanting to pave an existing road, county road.
Um, one question was like Commissioner Frigio did is our ordinance seems to be worded as if you generate that many homes on property that creates a subdivision. Technically, on my property, I could build four two acre lot homes and now I have a subdivision on my property.
With a new road.
And I'd have to put a new road into
New road was curb and gutter.
So, so let's, let me, let me ask a question in a different uh, manner that might clear it up. If I go down Ellis Road and I make four driveways off of Ellis Road, each driveway goes to a house. Is that a subdivision?
No, that's four cuts off of Ellis Road.
So if I make one driveway, say four driveways off Ellis Road and put four houses, that's not a subdivision, is it?
That's not considered a subdivision.
Okay.
Subdivision. You are subdividing the property. And the definitions as a subdivision, you do have these, you have orders for subdivisions, where they create, you know, subdivision with new roads and everything. Um, I don't know, I don't know verbatim what the definition is in our ordinance off the top of my head.
I've got it. Definition of the subdivision is the dividing of a parcel of land into more than three lots, excluding the parent parcel.
Yep, doesn't have to be cut in. It's any division of, that's what I thought.
But then when, but then you get into the rub standards under the subdivision regulation.
Well, if you take a parcel on a road that had eight hundred feet of road frontage and I went and bought it and I turned it into four lots, that is under the subdivision guidelines and that's what Mr. Commissioner was stating. Anytime you cut after that third lot, if I went and bought ten acres and only put three houses on it, that's just three lots. I don't have to come in here and do anything. I can rock and roll. You go to that fourth one, it puts you in the subdivision guidelines.
And if you decide to go to road
Same with our height. If you go down there and cut four driveways, it is a subdivision, but then they'll have other restrictions that they would have to fall under. You start worrying about water runoff and all that comes.
Right, they have to retention. Soil road and all that. But now you're getting into the roads and it depends on the regulations for the roads. If you guys are saying that they got to pave the road, you know, current road with gutter.
Then we were asking with our subdivision regs if the curb and gutter had to be in, but you said not on a straight line like that.
No, and if they cut a road into a subdivision, yes. I don't know. I'm, this is my first time using a current road and then paving a current road if you guys require it, cause there's a current road, they're just asking to pave it. I don't know if you guys are required to cut
Do we have the layout of that property? I think it's in our last, but it's not here.
I'm looking for it, Commissioners, well, I don't see an attachment in my emails from John Knight or Brandon Larry.
Cause if it's thirty plus acres and they paved that two thousand linear feet.
Then they got paved into the two.
Right.
He has two lots, one, one on eleven acres and one on thirty-six acres where they plan to construct new homes. That's what was in the minutes from last week.
Right, eleven acre on one side and thirty-six on the other.
So a total of forty-seven acres. I just want to make sure we're consistent with our ordinance. I mean, if you cut in X number, even if they're all from Ellis Road, the way the ordinance reads, that's creating subdivision.
But you would not have curb and gutter on a county road. That's a, that's once you leave the county road and go into a subdivision. We don't have enough, we don't have enough roadway on each side to do a curb and gutter and then
Right.
And you know.
But does the ordinance read that? I don't think it does. Does it read that if you create a subdivision and that road has to have curb and gutter? So we're kinda
And keep reading down.
I mean, yeah, I have to thank you for bailing me. I don't know if this specifically say that.
If you cut in.
Yeah.
Cause that's where it has to be.
Right, I get that, but I just, if we're saying you do this and stuff, I usually
Now, we've done several, there are several of them up in Gene's area that are straight line acres and they don't have a curb and gutter there because they didn't cut into the property.
I mean, cause my personal opinion is if he wants to pay the sectional room and bring it up county standards and then turn it over to the county and it has a bond on it and those things, I personally don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure we're following our ordinance and the way it's out.
There would be one, two, three, four, five, six lots off Ellis. Yeah, I can't say, I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six.
They were all feet off of Ellis.
Those six would come off Ellis.
And then if he develops a larger
The rest of it comes off of a forest and he would put a road in.
But then he's got
And when he puts that has curb and gutter.
Curb and gutter.
Yep. So the paving of Ellis Road does not have to be curb and gutter.
No. No.
In all streets, all new streets serving subdivisions with lot size, small and large required to have curb and gutter. She's right about the existing.
We'll make sure we follow that. That was the reason for my question, so. Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion?
No.
Which district is this in?
I make a motion that we approve letting the developer pave the two thousand feet. And the road has to be brought to the board and accepted as a county road system. It has to meet the county standards and a fine be put in place per the county ordinances. And the pavement also has to start from existing pavement to continue.
And name that street in your motion.
And on Ellis Road.
I'll say.
The two thousand foot section of Ellis Road.
Anybody what you're saying, if I were motion to second, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next to the item five, discussion.
Real quick, make sure that I understand.
Sorry.
Think cause I've dealt with developers before. You intend that to be any new paving has to touch existing pavement, not just the first section, right? So in that one, you're concerned?
Yes.
Yeah.
You may want to make sure that's clear in the minutes. I wouldn't want somebody to go, well, the first one touched and then on down, only the first one had to touch.
Yeah, we just don't want someone to go down there about a half mile by another track. We got pavement, dirt, pavement, dirt.
That's what I'm saying, but arguably some developer may say, well, I only had to pay, only the first had to be touching. So it was any new paving has to touch
Any new paving has to, existing paving.
That's what I
Where? Yes.
On Ellis Road.
Yes.
So you modifying your motion?
I modify my motion.
Second, all in favor still, still all in favor. Okay, number five, discussion of two acre lots.
Mr. Chairman, uh, at one of our other meetings, we all had some concerns whether or not if there was a provision or not in there for two acre lots on dirt roads. That's not a subdivision that, so I had to ask Cassandra to check into it, find out. So she's gonna either give us whatever information she found out of what needs to be done to get that provision clarified.
Okay, so I read the ordinances and got with there and there's not a provision in the ordinance that says that you can have less than five acres on a dirt road. When I was talking up there and he said that he thought there was supposed to be a provision that states that you could have When I was talking up there and he said that he thought there was supposed to be a provision that states that you could have two acres. Um, the, the two acres to a, a family member on a dirt road. But unfortunately it's not, did not get put in the um ordinance to say that. So right now we are a five acre minimum on dirt road, no matter who you are.
So what would it take? How does he go about to get that ordinance or have it corrected to where? Still, if it's five acres, they can't, they have to have five acres unless they paid. That stays. That's, we need that. Like, we don't need all that traffic up and down dirt road and forces to pave it. But how do we add that provision to where if somebody wants to cut out two acres, they can build out?
You guys would have to give me permission to amend the ordinance to state, so.
But I also think we need to be very careful with where we're going right here with the simple fact of what we just passed.
But what is, I think.
It doesn't matter. It's gonna intertwine. We gotta be very careful with what we do right here.
It's gotta be worded correct.
Well, I just don't agree with our, with two acres on dirt road. It's gonna increase it. It's gonna be more maintenance on that road. I think we need to leave it five acres. We could do the two acres if it's paved because the roads are more sustainable at that point, but we just passed. Something stating that they could do this for two acres if they paved the certain area with touching of this. And now we're discussing something totally different of two acres on dirt roads and continue with that. If that's the case, then we didn't need to make them pave. This part to go to two acres on what we just passed.
No, it really is. It's really two different options. Cause the reason for it is if you go out here on a paved road. And a man has four or five acres, he wants to cut out two acres for his son or daughter to build a house or his mother to build a house, he's allowed to do that. But someone's on a dirt road with five acres, they're being punished even though they're paying the same taxes and the same property value. They're being punished that they can't cut out two acres. It's not a subdivision, but once somebody comes in here and says, oh, I got twenty acres. And I want to cut six lots out for all my family. Now he went to a subdivision, he would have to pay. But if it's not a subdivision, there should be a provision in there for somebody to be able to cut out two acres. Either to sell it to help pay for bills or to sell it to have their mother or son or daughter build a house next to them. I don't know why we would punish the citizens of this county saying, if you live on a dirt road, you have to have five acres.
Well, I think they have the same right to come before us and request to have the cutout, am I right? If they had three acre or if they had five acres and they want to cut out two acres to deal for somebody else, they can still do that, but it's a special provision.
It would be variance, that variances are not normally done by hardship.
Right.
And so they've had to prove hardship for variance.
So there is a path and avenue for someone in need to be able to.
Someone in need, such as they need to build. Their mother who's sick and has been near the.
But we did pass not long ago that we can do mother-in-law suites up to a thousand dollars. So that fits within that. If they need to do that.
But if you have, you know, seven acres and you want to give your kid.
Two.
Two acres on dirt road to build on your property, they can't do that because. That, and that's where Gene was going. He was wanting to say if you had seven acres and you want your child to live on your land.
That's not how the conversation started with me. It was, we started off talking about two acre lots, not cut out two acres.
No, I was trying to clarify that if it's a five acre lot, if it's subdivision, if it's not paid and they want to go and develop it. Force these developers to have five acre minimum to keep that much traffic off. But a taxpaying citizen in this county ought to have the right to cut out two acres and sell it for somebody in his family or just to sell it because. He needs twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars to go catch up on bills and so forth. So, um, I mean, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that if she looks into where it is feasible, not, not a subdivision. But you are, you can buy a piece of property and build a house on two acre lots on a dirt road in Meriwether County. I'll put that in a form of a motion.
That will be changed in the order.
No, it's. No, it's adding a provision. It's not changing the ordinance.
Well, you.
What's this a zoning ordinance? So you have, have to follow the, you have to have public hearings and all that. It's just a zoning law. You can't just change.
Well, that's what I was asking, what, what, that's why I was asking earlier, what?
I thought you asked her to.
Right, and what's the step, there are procedures that we would have to go through to accomplish that if we chose to. Should have good to.
I'd have to get approval from, you guys would have asked me to go to the.
You'd have to advertise, I'm gonna advertise publicly.
Well, once y'all, if y'all want to change this, all I was saying is if y'all changing it is the board's prerogative. If you want to change it, it's unlike or most of your ordinances, you can change any night because it's in your zoning. You gotta run an advertisement, have a public care. I don't make those rules.
Right.
But yeah.
Well, I made a motion that we would do whatever standard advertisement and so forth to have it where you can't have a two acre lot. On a dirt road, but not, it does not fall under the subdivision guidelines. You're gripping face. Tell me what I'm saying wrong there.
I don't know what the hell you say.
But you worded it like you really meant.
Yeah, I think it's, we're going to, he would like for us to have a public hearing. On the, have a discussion on changing the ordinance or having provision in the ordinance to go. I, I don't.
A two acre track, but, but still that doesn't affect the subdivisions ordinance you already have was. That's requires paving if you're gonna go into subdivisions.
Thing to do is probably revise the ordinance.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Want it. And once you, however y'all want it, then you have the public care.
But are we talking about being able to cut out for somebody or are we really aiming that we're gonna do and allow? Two acre lots on a dirt road. I'm a little confused because it's been multiple angles here.
I think what you're saying is that you would like to see a taxpaying citizen be able to cut out a less than five acre track for a family member.
Well, it's not even for a family member. There's a piece of property on, if a man owns eight acres and, or six acres and he wants to. Put two acres up for sale and have the real estate put it up there and sell it. Somebody should be able to buy it and go in, get a permit and build a house on two acres. If you can do it on a paved road, you should go and do it on a dirt road. But when you go into that subdivision stuff where you start doing multiple fifteen, twenty, fifty houses like they had over on Beale Evans. Then by all means, yes, it needs to be paved and keep us from having to keep up with the maintenance of the road.
So you, so you won't change the ordinance?
So where there could be a, a two acre lot is on a dirt road is just as feasible as a, an individual on a paved road.
Then, then, I mean, as a commissioner, we have a right to bring anything to the agenda that we want. So we would need to add that to an agenda meeting in the future. To have that discussion. We can't do it tonight.
No, y'all want to go ahead and run the advertisements and everything as well.
I think we need further discussion to clarify exactly what we want to change.
That emotion.
Yeah, I put that form of the motion to have to table this until the next meeting, whenever that date is for further discussion.
That's fine.
For more clarification.
Second.
I have a motion that that date will be November twenty-fifth.
All right.
So the motion to say it all in favor. All right, uh, new business. Item one is the ordinance amendment twenty twenty-five dash oh four. Amendment one, chapter thirty of the code of ordinances to add section thirty, three roof of travel, roof trucks. To provide for definitions, restrictions, exemptions, designation of roads and enforcement. Provide for severability to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Commissioners.
All right.
Commissioners, I won't repeat that because that's exactly what I have in the first title of mine is what Chairman Worsley just stated. There's a total of forty-nine roads that has been identified as no through truck routes. Proper DOT approved signage will be required on both ends of each designated roadway and must remain visible and clear of any debris or obstructions. You also have a, a printout from legal and all those changes that Michael recommended. Have been made in the ordinance that um County Clerk Stevens has for the chairman to sign. And Gerald Road, I will mention on that one, it is listed as one of the roads, a no through trucks.
Yeah, okay, so you brought that up. So it's the signal to those citizens coming in tonight. That business is located on Gerald Road, right, has access off. So this would not even apply to that business because the truck can come from either direction. Cause they are doing business on that road.
I do have to say that road does have a lot of cut through trucks off that road. So it's not just your, not just T and D trucks that had.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be.
But the, but the trucks in that facility, this would not even apply to them because if they got pulled over, I'm going right here on Gerald.
Well, yeah, but what it's supposed to be, they're supposed to go the shortest distance. I mean, what I'm saying is when they come in off of Hobinsville, instead of staying all the way to the red light in Luther'sville. And taking a right on the state highway, you come down and turn into that business. They're taking one hundred coming down and cutting across Gerald Road. They're not supposed to be doing. They're doing it to save time. That's why any trucker goes to a cut through road is to save time. Yes, that end of the road should have a sign and they should not be permitted to come down Gerald Road. Under all state ga- guidelines, period. I've already talked to GDOT, but they, we, they don't control our dirt, our county road.
I have traveled that road every day coming back and forth work. That road does have um no through trucks passage point. That way it lets the trucks coming off the Roosevelt Highway come in, do what they need to do, but they're not supposed to go past.
Yeah, when they come out of that business, they'll take a right and go to one hundred.
When they should.
When they can take a left and go a hundred yards and be on the main highway there and go back to Luther'sville. And what's redundant is we've got a sign out there that says no through trucks and then there's a sign out there that says no jack brakes. But ain't no trucks on there. You shouldn't be having a problem with jack brakes. I don't know how we end up putting two signs out there like that.
The jack brakes came before those.
Yeah, probably before the, uh.
This, the portion of that that describes they are supposed to take the shortest route from a state road. If they are doing business on that county road. Is that state law or was that should be in our ordinance, but it's not?
I think it is with the state.
So we wouldn't have to, you know, it'd have to be in the ordinance to make sure everybody understands that.
It might be like that, because I've always heard they had to take the shortest route on the state highway.
I've never heard they have to take the short. But what this says is it basically says that they can go down those if they have to. But if you're making a delivery, then the only way to get there. Or if you're going to get your truck worked on and the only way is down one of these roads. You gotta have an exception, otherwise.
Like the logging trucks, I think is more what it referenced, that they have to take the shortest path to get to a state highway. To save that weight on there, but I think it was.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
So they're getting stopped, we're not gonna be able to do anything for the traffic on the other end of Gerald Road because they will legally be able to travel.
No, not if we get it worked right. That's just the point. There's, there's probably come off, they just don't want to have to go back to Luther'sville, stop at a red light, make a left and go out.
I'm just saying that this ordinance is written does not provide for that.
We were not, I mean, we followed up and went through other ordinances from surrounding. I know John researched it thoroughly. And we didn't see any of that about the shortest route in any ordinance that we looked at. That's why we don't have it in our.
So first thing is we have this ordinance on the pavement. We want to make a motion to approve here or not, or we want to make my petition to send it back.
They can go however they want. I don't think you can make them take the shortest route, but what you can do is say you can't go down these roads. So I mean, that.
If you don't have business.
That's correct. Yeah, 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 so.
No, that's, so it's either we accept or deny this one is written and go back and go on up.
I have one more question about this ordinance. Does it have any stipulation if they live on that road and are taking their trucks home?
That would be another one, yeah.
That I don't, I didn't see it in here.
We can put that, I would, I would interpret that as somewhere you gotta go.
Well, I would think so, but just so that, that has the clarity.
But you know, that, that may be something you want to think about because I know that if they're going up and down, they can tear a road up and y'all may not want, that's up to the board what y'all want to allow.
Right. And I know there's a lot of truck drivers that drive for themselves and take their trucks home. I mean, that would be the operation, but even if you work for a company. I just wanted to make sure that we had that clarified. This is the, the best we could come up with as far as all the research that we did. So there's maybe something that needs to be added.
That's why we have this.
Look, we're making the ordinance and so forth and we're saying, okay, so other businesses show up on a road somewhere, can it not be added in there? That they must take the shortest route off the state highway to their, to their location?
Nathan, tell me what this means. It says access to and from such locations shall be made using the most direct available route. To the nearest designated truck route.
Well, that, what that's, I mean, I guess you could say that's the same thing as the shortest route, but what you're supposed, you're supposed to go the most direct route using. No through truck, I'm using through roads where you can drive a big truck.
Right.
So I'm, yeah, yeah.
So isn't that what that says?
It is, but again, you know. It does, but again, if you said driver show use the shortest route, that's not gonna. But I mean, they can go whichever way they want. Y'all just want them off these big roads.
Right.
Right, that's, so that's where I think you focus your efforts is decide where you don't want them and you prohibit them there.
I'm, yeah, I think it's about the best we can do without.
We can change it any medium too. If it's not working and something happens, y'all can change. This isn't a zoning ordinance. You can change this any medium.
Can Commissioner Snells appoint Dee with it? Hit all your highlights because it states Meriwether County or Joining County for forest products, farm animals, materials, equipment, machinery. Supplies, farm products.
Well, when it says with the residents was hauling forest products, I mean, if they're a truck driver for Walmart, but they got off work and are headed home. That wouldn't necessarily fall under that. If you work for Walmart distribution, but you get to go home tonight and then head out in the morning. That's the only reason I was. Yeah, I was reading that, but it didn't really cover what I was asking, but I think this is a good working model to start with. And good groundwork to get going and then.
It, it's one of the.
To make changes.
Lives on my road and, and I, it bugs me every time I see him turn on it and go home, but it's not my place to tell a guy what kind of profession he should choose. He's trying to make a living, you know, and the road's breaking up all along the edges, you know, but I mean, the guy's trying to make an honest living.
That's where y'all have to decide whether y'all prohibit it or not.
So I, I don't think, I think we're really overreaching in our authority, but.
I do too.
Well, I didn't want to prohibit someone from being able to take their truck home. I just want to make sure. I didn't want to be getting pulled over needlessly because they're trying to get home either.
Well, nobody gonna know. He's not riding with a sign flashing, I live on this road. So he's, he's gonna get pulled over if someone's taking the ordinance seriously.
That's the way it's supposed to work. They got pulled over and he says, I live right up here on the left and I'm barking there, they go.
Yeah, they, they have, they're, they're a number of, or I'm making a delivery, or I'm getting my truck worked on, or one of the few exemptions to, exceptions to.
But I thought they're taking tractor trailer home, depending on how much land you own, I thought you'd have to have some kind of business license or something, be parking commercial property there.
All right, anybody like to make a motion to approve this or?
I make a motion, we approve this ordinance amendment. Yes, that's written.
Second. Gene's second, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, next is select and approve employer's benefits broker consulting services.
Commissioners, we received six responses to the RFP issue for the service. A five-member committee reviewed the submissions and narrowed it down to the top two candidates who presented at October twenty-eight. Meaning the options for employer benefit broker consulting services are as follow. Number one, continue with NFP or current broker, select MSI benefit group. Or number three, select mark three. Both MSI benefit group and mark three delivered presentations to the board of commissioners. Staff believe that the selection has been narrowed down to two comparable brokers. Following the presentations, human resource director Valerie Chambers recommends mark three pending legal review of the contract. If the board chooses to go with this recommendation. Or with a different broker, staff will need approval to give notice to NFP that accounting is switching brokers and allow the chair, vice chairman to sign all related documents. Pertaining to this change.
So when you say. The five-member committee reviewed the submissions and narrowed the field to the top two candidates. And then the top options were recommended as follows. Is this in order of what that five-member committee did? Number one option is continue with NFP?
No, it's not in any type of order.
Cause the board can always elect to stay with their current broker if they don't like them.
And I'll say over the years we've had these is, has not been a good experience a lot of times with that particular one. And I for one would like to change brokerage firms and I would like to make a motion to accept mark three.
Second.
Is that contingent upon legal review of the contract?
Uh huh.
Allow the sheriff, vice chairman.
Well, that, all that was in there, yep.
Yes.
Well, notify Mark three and get the ball rolling. Will notify him and get the ball rolling.
Item three is discussion on covered bridge.
Commissioners, due to a recent incident involving the covered bridge, staff explored options for installing solar powered cameras to enhance security. However, solar systems are not always fully effective or reliable. As a result, discussions are taking place regarding the possibility in narrowing the entrance. To prevent large vehicles from assisting the bridge. This measure would help prevent and preserve the historical structure from future incidents. Staff is also continuing to evaluate alternate security solutions as limited power sources and specific camera requirements present challenges. In maintaining efficient surveillance on the bridge.
I want to challenge the limited power source. There's a light bulb in, in another box on the pole right there at the bridge.
I asked that question from my understanding, we cannot hook up to Georgia Power. That power pole has not our property.
So what would be the cost to run power to to another pole?
Shouldn't be just a very minimum cost though. Cameras instead of using solar power that where the camera will malfunction this way. You got a live feed. And it's constantly running twenty four seven. You got full power running to it. That camera's not going dead.
So the next item coming up, is this a request for them to film?
No, 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 no. That's a separate item that he reached out at last minute last week.
Well, there's no way to get sun to it if it's that thick and brush and so forth. I understand that, but I've got cameras in the woods. Been there for two years with a solar panel. I don't even have to go to them. As long as that solar panel is getting sunlight on it. It's fully charged. It sends it to my phone. My phone blows up all night long.
Yeah, we got them. Two of them, I believe, are working too on malfunction. We're replacing them with any solar powered camera that are liable to go out.
At one point I knew. There was one way up on a pole and I didn't think it was solar powered. I thought it was actually attached into something that Skip had put in.
I think so because I remember talking to Director Jones over nine one one. He said they had a way they can monitor the live feed of that camera.
Yeah, it wasn't a solar one.
It's a dome camera, right?
Yeah, it was way up.
I think they switched because of the age of the camera. But I had a discussion with Director Jones that they were, there was a live feed and nine one one was able to monitor at any given time.
Well, we need to get back to that somehow.
And we can look and definitely to see what it costs to put a power pole on by the county that we can put a power line connection up to. I T Director Brown is not here tonight. So he knows more about all that than I ever would.
Think it wouldn't, it would definitely fall under your approval of expense. Get a pole set and I'll run to it from whoever is distributing power.
And if we're gonna run some, they have to, it require a breaker, so that breaker would have to be out of the way, so they couldn't be disturbed too.
We'll put up high enough because later on we're discussing the bucket truck as well.
So I mean, and I also agree with the restricting access to keep large vehicles from getting in. Yeah, but I would maybe do that if not on the bridge. I think I don't want to see us, is my opinion, do more modifications to the bridge for that. Do that at the entrances on E T.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a steel structure.
So is the steel structure not there?
It is.
My truck, twenty five hundred, I closed the mirrors and I pulled through that. Channel line. And I had a foot on each side, so I recommend closing it up six inches on each side.
Because we had brought it down at one point. It was too high and it allowed box trucks to go through, so we brought it down another two foot or something at one point.
I think y'all need to keep investigating those options and bring that back, in my opinion.
They need to send something to somebody. Not somebody.
I agree.
Oh, we'll we'll set it where it'll get alerted to you, like I said, my phone, I T director's phone. Constantly.
Has anybody been sent out there to get the graffiti cleaned off, pressure washed or anything?
Is that under the bridge or is it on?
Yeah, it was all written up right to the bridge when all this at the same time.
I have to double check. I think so, but I would double check on that one because I didn't see any on the bridge itself, but I think that was.
Times, but it could have been written on there again. They come down through there and they'll spray it.
And we get a live feed camera to help as well too, because if you do the deer camera like you have, it's one click and then twenty seconds later, they can disappear. You won't get them again unless they pop back up.
Mine's every two seconds.
The deer cameras, they have live videos as well.
I think y'all need to come back with some.
Yeah, I go ahead and make a motion to close six inches on either side of the. A foot on six inches on either either I beam, so that narrows the opening by one foot on both ends of the bridge.
I'll second it.
We're looking at security and freeing that back.
Why would they need to bring that back? If he popped the garage to spin, why can't they?
I'll report back on it.
Instead of spending another two weeks talking about it another.
Let me, I'll I'll report back to the board when it's completed. I'll report back to the board when it's completed. I'll reach out to them.
Okay, next item four, filming at the Red Oak Covered Bridge in one scenic road with Barnes Project Video Truck.
Commissioners, we received a request from Michael Woodrow to film around the Red Oak Covered Bridge on Thursday, November thirteenth. He's also requesting permission to film one additional driving scene that would not require any road closures. In addition, he would like to hire two deputies to manage traffic control at certain filming locations featuring Barnes. The proposed location is two four four Massengale Road in Woodbury, Georgia, R V Driving and the Red Oak Covered Bridge B roll only. He is aware that he cannot go onto the bridge with his equipment and if it not make the bridge, he just wants to shoot from going towards the bridge from my understanding.
He updated that. Um, if it's not on there, it should be, but he updated that on last week on Friday. He originally wanted to film at three different locations. He updated it to two different locations, which one is the two forty four Massengale. And the B roll, when I spoke with him, he explained to me was attaching a camera to the top of a car and driving it through the bridge.
He changed his scope when after I talked to him.
Was it the third location?
Massengale Mc uh road and then driving it, hooking a camera to the top of a vehicle and driving it through the bridge for a shot.
Yes, let's start hearing it. That was further down at one thirty. I was still up at Glover Davis at that time. He has submitted all paperwork, film application. He just has to complete the um liability waiver. Yes.
Legals looked over it?
We need, they need to do one of our film location.
Okay.
The board approves, that's what I would recommend. I'd make them sign one of those agreements.
I make a motion to allow as long as they sign one of the filming agreements mentioned by council.
All in favor?
Excuse me, do we need to back up Commissioner Collins? Remember that one night we were talking about that you talked about closing it in? I don't know if that has to be part of the motion, but you men, you you mentioned something about having a gate to one side for emergencies and so forth. Does.
I thought there's already a gate.
There's already a gate.
Heard you say we need to have a gate. Okay.
We'll update that gate to a to a more sturdy air gate.
Well, I said that earlier, but then I found out there's already.
Okay, I just remember hearing you say.
All right, item five is approval to extend county Christmas holiday observance to include Friday, December twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
Commissioners, due to the observance, uh, Christmas holidays on Wednesday, December twenty fourth, Christmas Eve and Thursday, December twenty fifth, Christmas. Staff requests approval to include Friday, December twenty sixth as part of the Christmas holiday observance for the twenty twenty five calendar year. Looking back in the minutes, we did do this in July fourth of last year. It fell on a Thursday and Friday was given to employees as.
That we uh approve this year.
That's what I've been saying.
The financial impact estimated, you're looking at twenty five thousand roughly.
Y'all may just tell us when y'all do more work.
In my defense, I will say with the employees, this will give the employees an extended time with their family during the the Christmas. They have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and the weekend. You know, you know, I'm gonna fight for the employees on this one, Commissioner, but ultimately it's your decision, but I'm gonna fight for the employees on um this request.
I'm okay with it since it falls on Thursday, I guess.
That a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. Contingent upon, don't come back at the next meeting and ask for the day after.
That that is not in the plan for that. I promise you that.
All we uh motions to say it all in favor?
On behalf of the staff, thank you, commissioners.
That's the Christmas bonus.
We had to give y'all a hard time.
Yep.
Every business everywhere is looking at.
Just the way it falls on the counter sometimes.
That's why Allison left the note.
Item six is approval of bucket truck repairs, public works to meet safety standards and comply.
Commissioners, we have a two thousand seven bucket truck that requires servicing repairs to meet safety compliance. The main factor is Altech and has inspected the vehicle and determined that numerous components need to be repaired or replaced. As a result, the truck is currently unsafe to operate and will not function properly. If the necessary repairs are not completed, the vehicle will be red tagged and removed from service. Altech has provided an estimate of thirty five thousand, six hundred and fifty four dollars and thirty eight cent for the required repairs. Funding for this work would come from a general fund as it qualifies as maintenance and repair expense. Upon approval, staff will receive to include the bucket truck in a preventive maintenance agreement to help avoid similar issues in the future. And from my understanding, this vehicle has never been serviced and if you can look at the quote, you'll see several items are rusted. Um corroded pins. I think that's a ten thousand dollar line I am myself.
Now, this would also fall under requalified post flop.
I asked Otters since his repair and maintenance, it was not.
It would T splosser.
That was the next question. The service agreement should definitely be.
I can ask him on that one because it's it's the repairs and maintenance is the kicker on it.
What what size truck is this?
This is a. Is it forty four, four fifty model? I think that's what we had on the bucket truck. I think it's a four fifty. I think it's equivalent to that. And we try to use it for the.
It's like a big truck. I mean, like.
It's almost like a little mini power truck type deal. I mean, they use it for all the cities require assistance, put up decorations. Um, we try to use it at the cover bridge and they cannot get the P T O switch to even operate. It's unsafe.
Have a maintenance agreement proposal yet. This is.
No, this is due to work and then we can enter it to prevent a maintenance to keep this from happening again. Speaking with David Hudson, he does not believe this truck has ever been serviced for safety concerns.
About to exceed thirty five thousand, six fifty four and thirty eight cent from the general fund under the condition that we. Investigate and bring it to the board, prevent a maintenance agreement. Second, if we don't do that, then we don't get fixed the truck.
Second. But check on the T splosser. Extended warranty, I think you can take.
I'll check with Otters and I'll get a price on a preventive maintenance.
Okay, next item is number seven, consideration of a budget amendment. Eight, do you do each one of these separately? So first is a clerk authority technical fund.
Commissioners, during the budget process, getting ready for the audit, we identified one revenue that needs to be recorded for closeout. It'll be a debit to the clerk authority technical fund for twenty seven thousand, two oh five, twenty three. Offsetting with a credit to the clerk's authority tech fund, which is a revenue account for twenty seven thousand, two oh five, twenty three. And this will require the chairman's signature.
This is because.
It's just a um allocate revenue for um the clerk authority technical. It was not budgeted revenue. This is um Superior Court, not. Yes, Kai, this is a fund that Superior Court gets additional funding for. They turn back over to the county when they buy outside projects, um updates to the courthouse, to the technical fund, to the clerk's technical fund.
Requires his and finance director's signature.
Yes.
Any questions about it? I make a motion to approve and present it and allow the chairman and finance director to sign.
Say it.
All in favor? Item B, the L G I P revenue correction.
Commissioner, this is the correct, the interest income general fund and L G I P general fund projects. It's two hundred thousand dollars. You debit the general fund and credit the project fund. It was recorded wrong during the budget process. And this is just to correct it for audit purposes. And requires chairman and all these require chairman and finance director to sign.
I make a motion to allow chair and finance director to sign.
Second, all in favor? I would see is the fiscal year twenty twenty five tire grant.
Commissioners, the next three are all grants. They have to be recorded for audit purposes. This is the tire grant for one hundred and twelve thousand. Two hundred and sixty one dollars and twenty five cent. You do have a debit and offsetting credit for revenue and expense.
This is for the disposal, right?
Great, uh, project that's been going on Panther, um. This is the grant, recording the grant income. No, sir, we still have a little bit left. We got one more project to do.
That project, the the other part is they're doing it Wednesday of this week.
What road is that?
It's down by Beazer then J D Donner, I believe.
We'll be applying for the twenty six grant as well because this this is working out pretty well.
So we will apply for this again.
Great.
Okay, I make a motion to make the changes that was presented and allow the chairman and finance director to sign. All in favor? Item D, fire EMS grant.
Commissioners, this is to record and expense the fire EMS grant for seventeen thousand, five eighty six, fifty nine. Due to a being granted, has to be done for audit purposes.
I'll make a motion to allow the chair and finance director to sign.
I'll say it. Item E is airport grant.
Commissioners, this is the airport grant for the lighting. This isn't a lighting. This is the entrance road grant. For the airport that came in in fiscal year twenty five for four hundred and fifty seven thousand, one forty nine, ninety seven. You have a revenue and an expense account that needs to be recorded for audit purposes.
I'm making a motion to allow the chair to sign and finance director.
All in favor? Number eight is approval to open new bank account for the continuation of sploss at F and M Bank.
Commissioners, due to the recent passage of the twenty six sploss, the finance department will need to open a new bank titled twenty twenty six sploss. Staff recommends this account be established with F and M Bank as the twenty twenty sploss funds are currently held there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor? Ask a question, Ed, oh, is it for the longer termers? Was this a tighter sploss election than in the past?
It was.
No, it just wasn't a big.
It wasn't a big turnout.
Wasn't a big turnout this time.
It was, it passed about sixty five percent.
Yeah, okay.
Next is number nine, consideration to set a work session to discuss proposals for courthouse repairs.
Commissioners, you have from River City beside you, three phases and proposals. EMC has recommended a work session for the architect and the C M. They proposed November thirteenth and November seventeenth in the evening. And as you can see from the proposals, they're very costly.
They want both dates or just one of them?
Just one of those dates. Um, this is to bring back other options to the board to see if they can get the total down. Then we were bringing back at a November twenty fifth meeting for the River City to begin work on the courthouse.
Seventeenth works better for me.
Monday, seventeen.
I put that in the form of motion for the seventeenth. Animal shows look like. I won't be you. You won't.
Thursday's best, the thirteenth best for me, but it's fine. I'm fine with it. It's a work.
What time?
Five thirty, is that what you said?
We knew five thirty. I just have to let them know.
Uh, so you do, uh, you're making a motion for Monday, November seventeenth, five thirty.
Yep.
Say all in favor?
Almost didn't know if I could.
I'll let everyone know that November seventeenth to be here in Chambers.
All right. Next is the traffic report from Karen Administrator.
I think Ms. Stevens has something she wants.
Quick comment. I think that we had, um, for some reason, when we changed the schedule for twenty twenty five, when our meeting dates changed in our times. I don't know what I got confused on, but the December meeting is actually going to be December the twenty third. The second meeting in December, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that it was not the thirtieth. I think I might have said that to people. And I had put it on a schedule, but when we updated adding Veterans Day, I was just trying to make sure I had sufficient time to advertise and stuff. But the meeting is actually December twenty third, so I just think for what if.
December when?
I make multiple of that day options is right before the eve.
Wasn't asking for it all. Just want y'all to know it is the twenty third.
All right. So anything else from the Karen Administrator?
Yeah, I just have a few updates, commissioners. I met with Dean regarding the radios. They are being staged and programmed and testing. Um, he expects hopefully within the next three to four weeks, we have a man hands at least to the deputies. Um, I attended three meetings at Glover and Davis in the past since the last meeting. Attended airport meeting, uh, counting the interviews. We have deputy director interviews for public works on Friday. Want to announce to the board and to the employees and this to go out. Wednesday, we'll have Thanksgiving lunch, November twenty. Wednesday, we'll have Thanksgiving lunch, November twentieth, twenty twenty five, here in the B O C chambers. Probably starting around eleven A M. Uh, we'll set those dates and stagger like we have in the past. The employees, I think, really get, have a good time doing all that, so we'll, we'll do that again this year.
Board members are welcome.
Yes, please, if you're available.
That's how we go, um.
If y'all available, please show up. I think that'd be nice just for the employees. Uh, met with several departments in the county, uh, received proposals for the courthouse repair. The three trucks from S O are ready to be picked up on wording, working on getting them painted white. Uh, with the sploss was renewed. Um, we sent it confirmation, waiting on D O R, receipt of the confirmation of the sploss. Um, we sent the creative actions to the audit of D O A, waiting on approval of those. And then we just got the email today that loan documents and policy has been provided to us. It would go under staff review and then it will be eligible for employees to take out loans. Will notify staff as soon as that is done. Hopefully that will be Wednesday, no later than Thursday this week. That's all I have.
These are the vibes I want to get the next airport meeting.
I think the day they, um, they saw a side that they didn't really like to see of me at some point.
Okay, report county commissioners, Commissioner Berry, you?
Um, I had an honor riding in the Veterans Day parade in Manchester this weekend and it was very nice. And I want to make sure that everybody remembers tomorrow, uh, Veterans Day and thank everybody for the service that they've done for their country. That's it.
Mr. Collins?
I just want to thank the county and all and employees and job they're doing within the county. And, uh, like also say special thanks to all the veterans. That's all I have.
I just like to thank everybody for coming out, coming to the meetings and letting us know. And the calls sometimes, I know they don't think they've heard, but they are, and we are doing the best we can for all the citizens. And thank the veterans for their sacrifices they made for us.
Mr. King?
Same thing. Appreciate what everybody's been doing. Just a reminder, uh, a lot of people get Veterans Day, Memorial Day confused. Veterans Day is for everybody that served and, and if you know anybody, take time, say, we appreciate your service. We appreciate what you did for our country. Cause that's why we get to sit here on our, our freedom now and enjoy ourselves like we do here in this country. And, um, I hope the staff will follow up. Those people that came tonight, it's, it's, it's sad that when they come in here, they just get to make a comment. And, and, and it has to be that way, but I don't think a lot of them understand that, you know, they walk up there to say something, then we're not allowed to talk back and communicate. So they just kind of leave, but I hope the staff will follow up. I, I think their concerns are very, um. Serious.
Yes, sir.
And whether, uh, E P D, uh, needs to be involved, whether there's a way they got to put a system out there that holds the dust down, keep it wet. Or, or, but yeah, I, I hope we follow up. It's just not, they come back again a month, two months now. Did y'all do anything?
We, we spoke with them as they came in and told them, please speak to the board, put it on record, but staff will be looking into it. But please come and put it on record for anybody that needs.
Guys could not comment back, so.
We tried to explain as they signed up that the commissioners will not, but I will be reaching out to them after the meeting, if not during that time.
Good. So hopefully we can get something done for them, especially with the noise and stuff. Other than that, I have nothing else, Chairman.
Adam, I do have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
So it's, people will find out eventually if you haven't already, that there is a major lawsuits come against this county. And this, to my personal opinion, is a frivolous lawsuit. Um, it's going to cost the county and the taxpayers of this county a lot of money. You're probably looking at anywhere from half a million to over a million dollars by the time this lawsuit is done. Um, it is filed against us by the N double A C P. And I think that every citizen needs to stand up, make themselves aware of this and just know that we're gonna fight everything we can. But unfortunately, it is gonna cost taxpayers a lot of money for this case. It's been brought up.
I agree. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I also like to thank all the staff and the county employees and what they're doing. Thank veterans for their service. And then I also like to thank this board of tonight. We've heard from a couple of people thanking certain board members for what they've been doing and the help they've been getting in communication. And I've been hearing a lot of that out with community from about different districts, you know, people seem to be getting more communication from this board. And, and more things that seem to be getting done than, I don't know whether they were accustomed to, or at least now they're being vocal about it. I don't know what, what it is. But I think y'all need to hear that. People are out there saying good things about you guys and. Yeah, that, that made me feel good to be a part of this board, so thank you. County attorney?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me read future meetings and notices first. We'll be closing observance of Veterans Day, Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty five. Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five at six P M. Where we close observance of Thanksgiving holidays, Thursday, November twenty seventh and Friday, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. We have a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, December eighth at six P M. I need a motion to go into executive session for litigation, personnel, real estate and taxes.
Some move, second.
All in favor? Thinking session seven fifteen. All in favor? Making regular session at seven forty nine. Uh, we'll make a motion to approve the salary adjustment as discussion executive session.
Second.
All in favor? And then make a motion to approve the employee retention program as discussion, discussing executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Any other business come forward?
No, sir.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?